Welcome to a meeting of North Penn School District's Board of School Directors, March 21, 2013. We're going to have our update. Mr. Meniscalko, could you get the lights?
Hello and welcome to this North Penn News Update. I'm Emily Milliron. Congratulations to several North Penn High School organizations for their outstanding achievements and recognition. The Academic Decathlon Team is the new state champion and will now head to the national competition next month. Special recognition to Senior Patrick Nicodemus for winning eight gold medals in ten categories. The Key Club also received many awards at the state convention, including a first place for total service hours completed. Advisor Linda Law also received special recognition award for her dedication to the club. And finally, the Student Government Association has been awarded a 2013 Gold Council of Excellence Award for the second consecutive year. Only 163 high school councils received this award nationwide. Congratulations to all of the students and all of these organizations for continuing the excellence of North Penn. The Philly Fanatics stopped by Nash Elementary School to celebrate the participation in the Fanatics Reading Challenge. Mrs. Benner's fourth grade classroom was honored at the top reading room in the school. The students at North Wales Elementary celebrated Dr. Seuss's birthday and Read Across America Day. The day was filled with fun activities and, of course, lots of reading. The Family and Consumer Science Department held their annual fashion show. Students in fashion and design merchandising debuted their latest creation on the high school runway. As part of Black History Month, one of the Tuskegee Airmen was a guest speaker at North Penn High School. Dr. Eugene Richardson spoke to the students about his experiences and encouraged them to be an active part of our ever-changing communities. And finally, the North Penn School District is proud to be named an Energy Star Partner by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. This honor is given to organizations who have strategically managed and improved the energy efficiency of its entire building portfolio. And just this week, the Educational Services Center has been given an Energy Star label by the EPA. That is all for this North Penn News Update. I'm Emily Milliron.
Welcome to our regularly scheduled action meeting. This meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania's Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the Audience of Citizens logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the board, the board president may ask the individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker.
Okay, Chief Sullivan, could you lead us in the pledge?
I'd be honored. Everybody, please stand up. Please.
Forward. Hooch. Forward. Hooch. Color guard. Hooch. Free set. Coats.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic
We're going to be moving that forward.
Okay, thank you for the presentation of the colors.
for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We are pleased this evening to have Chief D. Sullivan present the JRTC unit of the North Penn High School.
all.
Chief Sullivan?
Forward. Coats. Forward. Hooch.
Board members, it's such a delight to be here.
Right. Hooch. Forward. Hooch.
My name is Chief D. Sullivan, and I'm one of the two instructors at North Penn High
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
School's junior ROTC. We were invited here today because we have outstanding cadets that had the privilege of competing in a major competition at Coltsneck High School in New Jersey where we earned the second-place trophy for color guard. So it is with great honor that I would like to present our commander, who was quite instrumental in preparing these young men to compete and bring home our trophy. So without further ado, I would like to have Cadet Hilo step forward and introduce his cadets.
First up will be Cadet Arpan Patel.
As we do many of our formal action agendas, we have recognition and proclamations. We're going to be moving that forward. Okay, thank you for the presentation of the colors. We are pleased this evening to have Chief D. Sullivan present the JRTC unit of the North Penn High School. Chief Sullivan?
Board members, it's such a delight to be here. My name is Chief D. Sullivan, and I'm one of the two instructors at North Penn High School's junior ROTC. We were invited here today because we have outstanding cadets that had the privilege of competing in a major competition at Coltsneck High School in New Jersey where we earned the second-place trophy for color guard. So it is with great honor that I would like to present our commander, who was quite instrumental in preparing these young men to compete and bring home our trophy. So without further ado, I would like to have Cadet Hilo step forward and introduce his cadets.
First up will be Cadet Arpan Patel. Cadet Luke Peretti. And Cadet Kevin Varga. And unfortunately, Cadet Jacob Krier could not make it today, but I do like to recognize him as well.
What we'd like to do is have the full administration and the whole board congratulate you if you'd like to come through. Chief Sullivan, would you please join us?
I'd be honored. Thanks. Thanks for supporting. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. I'm glad you're here. Thank you. Congratulations.
Please give another round of applause.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. For those who wish to see this again, this will be rebroadcast on Comcast Cable, Channel 28, and Verizon FiOS 29 tomorrow at 7:30. Monday, Tuesday at 12:30 and 7:30, and then Wednesday again at 12:30, so you'll have a chance to see it again. All right. They look sharp. It is now time for anyone wishing to speak to the board to please step forward. This is our Audience of Citizens. When we take comment from the public, please step forward, state your name and address, sign the Audience of Citizens logbook for us. Mr. Patchell?
Thank you. My name is William Patchell. I live at 404 Barney Lane, Lansdale, Pennsylvania. And I want to say good evening, and again, thank you for all your service to the district. This is not an easy job. It's a very thankless job, long hours of diligent, thoughtful labor to make the district the best in the Commonwealth. And by what we've seen tonight is a demonstration of one small bit of what the educational system in the district is delivering to all the stakeholders. And I think that the number of accolades from many areas that are placed upon the district only demonstrate what an incredible job we're really doing here. I mean, there's always room for improvement, but this is a demonstration of the work. And I think that this program, unlike many high schools, is very, very unique. It gives kids, not kids, but the students, an opportunity to go into areas that they wouldn't be able to do in any other high school. I have two topics to bring to your attention. One is the overtime, which I was concerned about at the high school security. I got information, it was only six and a half hours of overtime. That's a dramatic improvement over what I had seen before, and I want to thank you for that. It must be a view into using the available resources for a very, very focused application. So that is probably a big, dramatic reduction in cost. Okay. Secondly, the ongoing concussion, the concussion resolution, and the contract with no care at a cost of $60,000. I hope that the contract for the district in all sports mandated by the Safety in Youth Sports Act 2011 are going to be adhered to. This is in practice. This is in events. Now, I believe the name of the athletic trainer is Lou Anne, and Bill Bartle said she's doing like an incredible job. To have the number of sports and the oversight of all these things, she must get around a lot, because I find it hard to believe that, to fulfill that law, but I could be wrong. It's going to be a difficult job for what's mandated in this act. You know, we had 62 concussions just last year, and I think that had implications, because I asked Mr. Ryan, I said, "What are all these?" And he says, "Well..." I said, "Are some of these practices?" He says... I said, "This is not a game." I said, "This is serious." I said, "We can't be wiping half the team out," because I looked at, they didn't return to play. Because if you had three games to go to be reintegrated back into the... They were not going to play anymore. So it was pretty dramatic toward the end of the season. Was anyone aware that that's what happened? It's pretty dramatic. If you want to look at the statistics, I think you'd be shocked at how many... I thought it would be five or six. 62? That's a lot. And they had incidents in other sports, and it's quite prevalent, and I think we really need to look at this very closely. I have requested information on this problem, because they play sports at the middle school. Now, I don't know about the concussion incidents at the middle school, but if we have a chart which makes a paper trail, "Son, you've had five of these things already. You didn't even get to the high school. You're not going to be able to play." It's very, very serious, and I think we really need to look into this very, very critically. When they're practicing, we can't have any contact. It's not acceptable to have a concussion in practice. You're learning the plays, your physical conditioning, but that contact needs to be reserved specifically for the games, and the games only. The NFL has changed the rule. If the head comes in contact first, it's a 15-yard penalty. The networks, the advertisers are all going to act aggressively on this problem, and they're going to change the game. I don't believe the NFL has enough courage or wherewithal to address it. It would require the people that pay the checks, the advertisers, and the networks. So this situation is being addressed. You can't have a kid in high school, he's already tapped out, no college, he will not go play football in college because he has recurring injuries, which he will not be playing. And it's very, very sad that somebody should burn out at such an early age. So I think we have an ongoing discussion about this. I'm waiting to see a dramatic reduction in the number of concussion injuries. I think what we should root for is at least a 50% reduction in concussion-related injuries. And I'll be back next year to see that if we're approaching that goal. I think that is a realistic goal. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Paul Edelman. I live in Upper Gwinnett. I just had two quick questions, if I could, asking if there is any status update as far as the North Penn Charter School Collaborative Appeal, and have any of the four local legislators offered any insight, reaction, or projections in regards to that pending appeal?
I can. The first step, there's nothing other than the first step that we're aware of, and I believe that you're aware of, which is that they have filed for certification of their appeal with the Common Pleas Court. The court, as of this afternoon, had yet to take any steps on that, but they had, as you're aware, they need to submit a petition signed by at least 1,000 adult residents of the district. It appears that that is what has been done, and so that is before the Common Pleas Court for certification, before the appeal moves on to the Charter Appeals Board in Harrisburg.
Okay, thank you. Right.
Because I've had those conversations for a long time, in the last three or four years.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, let's move the agenda forward. Recommend approval of the minutes of the 1,005th action meeting held on February 21, 2013, and the work session held March 12, 2013, as circulated.
Some of...
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Let's move to committee reports and start with Support Services. Mr. Schilling?
Thank you, Mr. Shapinski. The Support Service Committee has not met since the last school board meeting, but the committee does ask for your support of the action items for approval, Plan Parts D and E for the Hatfield Elementary School renovation is an addition listed on tonight's agenda. Our next meeting of the Support Service Committee is scheduled for Monday, March 25, at 6:00 p.m. here at the Educational Service Center. End of report.
Thank you. Mr. Schilling, any questions of Support Services this evening?
Yeah, John, John Strobel. I was over at Englewood this afternoon watching the kids are putting on an act, you know, they're imitating various people. But I took a walk through the new part that was done, and I saw, and I took pictures. I've got like big wet spots where the brand-new tile is...
Yeah, it's in the hallways.
In the hallways.
Three or four places.
Yeah.
Yeah, the area of the cafeteria, kitchen, and gym has not been done yet, so they're right on the edge of the old and the new.
This was like about halfway down the hall, and I thought, "These are brand-new," and it made me wonder...
Right near the cafeteria? Right near the cafeteria?
Yeah, I didn't know if it was cafeteria, but I'm thinking, if these are new, has the roof been done yet?
The roof has not been done on the cafeteria, kitchen, and gymnasium, so that's where they meet.
Okay. I saw some other things that may be on the punch list, like sections of the wall. Oh, as you approach the school, as you approach the school, on the left-hand side, down the bottom below the windows, you see the cinder blocks. I hate to see that on the punch list, when it's something you see right away when you walk up to the school, like, why can't they pick up one like a brick facade or something? You know what I mean? You see the grass...
Isn't that a seasonal issue? We don't do it till the spring when the weather changes?
No, I'm not sure what you're talking about, but we can look at it.
If you walk up to the school, here at the entrance, to the left, below the windows, about the side, you see just plain, just cinder block.
There's a decorative cinder block below the windows that's supposed to be there.
But it's exposed, and...
Yeah.
But the right side is covered.
If I may, Mr. Don, we'll be glad to look at that. If we could just continue the discussion after the meeting, we'll gladly look at that.
Mr. Schilling, the other thing I heard is I attended the Hatfield Home and School Meeting, and they did request that they can ask us to consider putting two additional mods on-site for the special programs. That was the only thing that they had requested, that they didn't talk about at the meeting.
Yeah, thank you for that feedback. We are looking at that.
All right.
Mods on-site, where?
Remember the 12?
No, at Penfield. Originally, they talked about 12 in the plan, but they asked for 14 to keep everybody together. There was a couple of group services that were being sent somewhere.
All right, ECP, Mrs. Leonard?
Thank you, Mr. Shapinski. At the ECP Committee meeting on Monday, March 11, 2013, several topics were discussed. The topics being considered for action include revisions to policies, textbook adoptions, and changes to the York Avenue Elementary and Inglewood Elementary Schools' sending areas. The amended policies that were presented to the committee were Board Policy Number 4271, entitled Drug and Alcohol Testing, and Transportation Department and Board Policy Number 5140, Student Wellness. These policies are attached to the agenda. Revisions to both policies are necessary in order that the policies be in compliance with and reflect changes in the applicable laws as well as district procedures. Also, the committee considered a request to adopt four textbooks for the high school math department. These textbooks are being recommended for adoption in response to changes to Chapter 4 law and the adoption of the PA Common Core standards. Additionally, a need for an updated anatomy textbook for the health department at the high school was determined. This is due to the age of the current textbooks, around 1983, and the curriculum having been updated. The nature of the anatomy course requires an updated textbook that aligns with the changes and discoveries made in the medical field. In order to better balance the enrollment for the physical plant facility of York Elementary School, it was recommended to assign students who reside in Broadmire Apartments and attend York Avenue to the newly renovated Inglewood Elementary School beginning September 3, 2013. In addition, three information items were presented to the committee. Curriculum updates were provided for Language Arts and Math for grades K through 6, English, Math, Science, Health, Social Studies, and Family Consumer Sciences for grades 7 through 12, and Art and Music for grades K through 12. One of the areas being addressed is the development or revision of the curricula so that it is aligned with the new PA Common Core standards. Updates regarding the concurrent enrollment program were presented. This program affords students the opportunity to take college-level courses for college credit at a reduced cost. Participating schools include Montgomery County Community College, Arcadia, and Penn State Abington. Overall, 45 students participated in 46 courses. The student success rate, defined as earning a grade C or better, was 91.3%. The results of the winter Keystone testing were shared with the committee. The percentage of students scoring proficient or above was as follows: 80% in literature, 77% in math, and 65% in biology. For students who are not proficient, there are remediation options. Spring Keystones will be administered to students in grades 7 through 10. 10th-grade students will take the literature and biology exams. Algebra I will be given to all 7 through 10th-grade students who have completed Algebra I and have not yet taken or scored proficient on this assessment. The committee also reviewed student travel requests. The next ECP meeting is scheduled for April 8, 2013. Thank you.
Any questions of ECP?
Yes. Diane, do you have a... I always ask this question whenever we're buying books. When I used to be on the committee, I used to ask for a total dollar value, and then when the next question would be, "Did Bob budget for those books for this year or next year, whenever you plan to buy them?"
Yes, the books are budgeted for, and if... I don't have it with me, but I can ask Tony to get you a total dollar amount.
50,000, 80,000, 10,000?
I'd have... I don't want to take a guess. I can ask Tony to forward that.
Tomorrow.
Okay? Yep, that's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Diane, can I do a follow-up question?
Sure.
That came up during ECP. As students take their keystones now, and we find out that they need additional support, is there a dedicated plan to this support, or is it going to be... I've noticed that I follow the PSBA updates, that students are now being asked to sacrifice their electives for remediation, which is reducing the need for staff in those electives. Is that going to be something we're going to consider as an alternative? Because you need to... I mean, we have built-in study halls. We're fortunate that way.
Right.
Our schedule's a little different than a lot of schools, but I mean, that's a reality.
We have a plan in place, moving forward for at least the next year or two, in terms of what we'd like to do for remediation. In some subjects, such as mathematics, the remediation's likely to take place within the next course. For instance, in math, what we're looking at is if a student's not proficient on the Algebra I Keystone, instead of going to geometry next, you go to Algebra II next, and the remediation would take place in the Algebra II class. For some subjects, such as biology, we are looking at a separate, dedicated remediation course, because the next course after biology would be chemistry, where you can't really remediate the biology content. So we're looking at a, really on a subject-by-subject basis, what makes the most sense in terms of remediation. The one thing that frankly, we are going to have to deal with probably in the next year or so is if the student has been through this remediation option, retakes the test, and still is not proficient, then what's the next step? And when we get the student to the point where the project-based assessment becomes an alternative, how are we going to handle that? Is that going to be done within the context of a course that already exists, or are we going to need to create a course for the students to complete that project-based assessment? Those are absolutely all decisions that we need to work out as this evolves.
Okay.
Mr. Shapinski?
Core for light.
Can I just, just to answer Frank's question, at the ECP meeting, we were given the cost of the books, and I do have that, and I'll pass it out to you later.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
All right, thank you. North Penn Educational Foundation, Mrs. Murphy?
Thank you. The Cinco de Mayo Silent Auction and Fiesta on May 5 is about six weeks away, so we're all getting ready. Invitations were mailed or hand-delivered this week, and donations are coming in. We can always use more donations than sponsors, though, so if you haven't committed yet, please do so. We hope to raise upward of $15,000. As you know, honor reads this year will be Don Reeve from Verizon, alumnus Jim Finneimer, and educator Steve Frederick, and the entire North Penn School District Technology and Engineering Education Department. The foundation's charity luncheon at Texas Roadhouse in February raised $1,400. We are currently planning next year's luncheons for Baco and North Wales, and a location to be determined. If there are any restaurants out there that would like to partner with us for a great cause, let us know. We received $2,400 in Educational Improvement Tax Credit Funds from Penn National Bank last month. Thank you so much for your support. The foundation currently has two approved programs for which EITC funds can be used. Christine Libarowski recently attended a workshop on this topic and is looking to submit more projects for approval by the May 1 deadline. There have been many changes to this program over the years, and the foundation hopes to engage more of the business community in securing EITC donations. The foundation's webpages on the district's website are currently getting a makeover. If you visit npenn.org/foundation, you will find a great deal of new information about what we do and how you can support us. We also added a PayPal feature to make online donations and to pay for our fundraising events, so it's never been easier to give to our foundation. In grant news, 147 Gwinnett Square and Inglewood students traveled to the Kimmel Center a few weeks ago. They experienced a reenactment of portions of Beethoven's life accompanied by the world-renowned Philadelphia Orchestra. Several excerpts of the Beethoven's famous works were performed by some of the best musicians in the world. Students were able to make connections between the story and the music. They were also able to see and hear the results of hard work, discipline, and practice. I want to thank our generous donors who made this possible, but also the teachers who applied for the grant to give our students this special opportunity. Speaking of opportunities, the foundation is currently accepting grant applications for the 2013-2014 school year. Those interested can find the online application on the foundation's website. The deadline is April 12. If you have any questions about the foundation, you can contact Christine Libarowski at the ESC. Thank you.
Any questions in our education foundation? Our finance report tonight, our finance chairman is not here, but I'm going to fill Mr. Meniscalko's background.
Okay, thank you. The last finance meeting was held on Wednesday, February 27, at 6:00 p.m. The informational items discussed included revenues, expenses, and balance sheet. Irene Dickinson explained... Irene Dickinson explained that according to the current estimates, we will have solid finances at the end of the year. However, many expenses do not come up until the end of the year. The general fund financial reports Irene Dickinson stated that the receipts and expenses are on track with where they were last year. Salary schedule, Irene Dickinson informed the committee that the business office transferred $500,000 of unused administrator salaries and $100,000 of unused benefits to the budgetary reserve. These excess funds were due to administrator vacancies and were previously being held and are now no longer in the budget for the next year. The EIT and transfer tax, Mr. Schock showed a PowerPoint with historic information. We are currently trying to make budget for the current year, but not by above much, not much above that. Regarding enterprise fund statements, community education, Irene Dickinson reviewed the aquatics programs, which are now broken out separately. The extended school care, they're still doing a good job with their budget. Nutrition services, Pam Gallagher reviewed the plans for financial improvements in school nutrition services. These include a reorganization of staff for better time management and job duties. Half of the expenses of the elementary cafeteria monitors will be returned to the general fund budget. And three, a price increase for both breakfast and lunch. The increase in prices will go forward for the approval of the full board. The budget update, Mr. Schock shared a PowerPoint with the committee about the budget process. This explains that the district gets updates regularly that change the preliminary budget. The discussion topics included bonds. Mr. Schock shared bond information with the committee. He recommends borrowing $10 million as a wrap. The committee agreed to move forward with a bond through PFM. The E-rate information was reviewed by Bob Schock. Capital projects, a list of capital projects was assessed with the committee. Security costs of $150,000 will be added to the list. Mr. Schock informed the committee that the wireless project will be completed district-wide rather than piecemeal. The actions being requested for board approval, monthly budget transfers, TCC, EIT, delinquent tax collection, and school nutrition services price increase. Our next finance meeting will be on Wednesday, March 27th at 6:00 PM. End of report.
Yes. Safe School Committee met on February 28th, and the following items were discussed: the building access system upgrades, surveillance camera upgrades, potential additional class buttons from Montgomery County Emergency Dispatch Center, and enhanced communications with our new radio system. Mr. Wilson continued with the discussion of the conversation with our police department about safe school procedures, the active shooter training received by security officers, and the substitute teacher orientations received regarding safe school procedures. The committee was updated on the progress being made with proximity card access systems, camera upgrades, and the timeline for implementation and installation of these security upgrades. The Act 211 Committee for tomorrow morning was canceled, and there's a DUI, or to remind people, there's, or at least the board members, there's a DUI reenactment on April 19th at the high school. The next meeting of the Safe Schools Committee will be scheduled for April 25th at 6:00 PM here at the ESC. End of report.
Any questions of Safe Schools? Isn't the reenactment always pre-prom? Isn't that when they do it usually? Personnel, Mr. Kerr.
Yes. Personnel Committee met in executive session March 5th from 5:00 to 6:00 PM to discuss matters of personnel negotiations and potential litigation.
Thank you, Mr. Kerr. Roll right into the next... North Monaco Technical Career Center?
Yes. The VOTech Board met Monday. The only issue, I think we reported last month, that the business manager is retiring, and she is leaving soon. There's been some continued discussion concerning sharing certain services, the IU services, to provide the business manager. There's, there's been some question about the, I guess, the ability of that individual to pay enough attention to, to the VOTech, and there's a little debate about that, and I think that that's gonna, will probably come back to the board next month and be, hopefully be resolved at that point. We'll, checking into some funding, checking in to see, you know, if, if the VOTech were to go out and hire someone, what are, what are they looking at? What's the board looking at salary-wise? So I think that'll be something that will, I think, will be put to bed next month. End of report.
Thank you. Any questions of North Monaco Technical Career Center? You really think they can do a shared services for that position?
I think so. But there are others that don't think so. But I, I mean, think about it. It's a $10 million budget, you know, one building. Three days a week, the IU was, was willing to, I mean, they're only, they're only a phone call away and an email away and a, a fax away or whatever, so I...
I do realize how that sounds when you say that, right? We're a $200 million budget. He said $10 million. It's, it's bigger than most big, small companies, I mean.
Well, I understand that. I'm just saying, you know, it's...
It sounds weird, doesn't it? That's the way it comes off, because we're so used to dealing with a $200 million budget.
I know. It's a relatively small budget. I mean, that's not to say, you know, you need somebody sharp to pay attention, but I think that you can get away with, you know, someone who is not physically there, but for three days a week, and that's, and that's what it's all about, so...
Right. I got it. Okay. Thank you. Montgomery County Intermediate Unit, Mrs. Murphy.
Thank you. The MCIAU met on February 27th, 2013. The board was brought up to date on programming being planned for the 2013-14 school year. Kudos were given to North Penn from Dr. Lois Robinson. On February 21st, the Montgomery County Autism Networks sponsored their third annual autism fair at Pendale Middle School here in our own district. Last year, families and educators from 15 of the 22 districts in Montgomery County attended the fair. The audit of 2011-2012 financial statements were approved. The IU is again offering its spring fitness challenge. It will run from April 1st to May 20th. Flyers and posters have been sent to the districts in our county. On February 4th and 5th, two special education supervisors, Robin Rooney and Damian Johnson, presented a state-grant keystones to opportunity topic of supporting learners with special needs to North Penn preschool teachers. There were three targeted preschools in attendance, along with other preschool educators. North Penn is the only Montgomery County school to have received this grant. All Montgomery County schools are struggling with sequestration and district budgets. Respectfully submitted, Carolyn Murphy.
Thank you. Any questions for the IU tonight?
I just might add that we discussed, obviously, the situation with the board meeting, and I kind of trust Stan Whistler, and I think that, I think they're, I think they will be able to do it.
What?
Shared services.
Yeah, it was discussed. And I think they're very talented.
Thank you. The public should note that the full board met in executive session this evening, March 21st, 2013, from 6:30 to 7:35 PM, to discuss matters of personnel and negotiations. I'm going to move forward with the superintendent's report. Dr. Dietrich.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I get to the superintendent's report, I do want to call attention to the board and the public that we do have two board policies, 4271 regarding drug and alcohol testing in the transportation department, and 5140 regarding student wellness, which are included for a first reading. Okay, item A, actually, item A should read, and I'm going to read the way it should read because it should be consistent with the attachment, and that is recommend approval of the contract between Chester County Intermediate Unit and the North Penn School District per item 17-13A through D.
Motion by Mr. Schilling. Second. Second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions?
This is in regard to the Brandywine Virtual Academy contract, but most precisely, it really should state as it does in the attachment, the contract is with the Chester County Intermediate Unit.
Any other comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the school nutrition services meal pricing per item 18-13.
Motion by Mrs. Murphy, second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to assigned students who reside in Broadmore Apartments and presently attend York Avenue Elementary School to attend Inglewood Elementary School effective September 3rd, 2013, per item 19-13.
Motion by Mr. Schilling.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Leonard. Comments or questions? All those...
Communication.
Communication. Yeah, that's true. I think that's already in the plan.
It's already planned.
Any other comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to submit Plan Con Part D, Project Accounting Based on Estimates documents to the Pennsylvania Department of Education for the Hatfield Elementary School renovations and additions, per item 21-13.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mr. O'Donnell. Comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to submit Plan Con Part E, Design Development Documents to the Pennsylvania Department of Education for the Hatfield Elementary School renovations and additions, per item 21-13.
Motion by Mr. Schilling.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Murphy. Comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend acceptance of the gifts to the district as listed.
So moved. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any comments?
Say thank you.
Say thank you.
Recommend approval of bids per item BA4, A through B, 1, as listed.
Motion by Mr. Miniscalco. Second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the personnel items listed A through C.
Motion by Mr. Kerr. Second by Mr. Miniscalco. Comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Approved.
Recommend approval of student travel, per item BA7.
Motion by Mr. Miniscalco.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Murphy. Comments or questions?
Good luck to the decathlon. I see we're taking care of the championship, the state championship one that we're sending along to, where are they going? Minneapolis?
Minneapolis.
April 24th. I hope the weather is a little fair.
Just, just in addition, I saw them at school last week. I was there with Mrs. Masti, and we just went to see them, and they said, are you going to pay for us to go? They were really, I said, yes, we are. Yes, we are.
Any other comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of contracts per item BA8, copies of which are on file in the Office of Business Administration.
Any other motion? So moved. Mr. Kerr, second by Mr. Schilling. Comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
I recommend approval of alternative placements per item BA9, copies of which are on file in the Office of the Director of Special Education.
Motion by Mr. Kerr.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Murphy. Comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
The vandalism report is included for your information. This does conclude the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Let's move forward with the finance report. Mr. Schock, would you start with the treasures?
Yes. This is the treasures report for February 2013. Cash receipts during February totaled $4,276,066.97. Cash dispersments for February totaled $24,430,212.94, leaving total funds available $98,116,839.20. That's the end of the report.
Thank you. Would you move forward with the sanction and approval of invoices?
Yes. Recommend approval of dispersments to be sanctioned for the month of February 2013 in the amount of $22,568,539.84, and dispersments to be approved for the month of March 2013 in the amount of $1,560,041.3.
I need a motion?